All right, it's 8:30 and we're going to get started. We'll start with Noelle Gray from Integris Baptist Hospital. She's the chaplain there, and she's going to give the invocation. And then James, can you lead the Pledge of Allegiance?
Good morning. Let us pray. Wise and loving God, we do thank you for this time, and we thank you for a wonderful time we're anticipating for Thanksgiving to be away with families. But before we get to dismiss and do that, we ask you to bless our city officials, our city leaders. God, they have lots of things they have to make decisions about. Help them to remember that they speak on behalf of the voiceless, and they are our representatives. How much we trust them to do what is right and to do what is just. We ask you now to be with them and give them choice blessings. These things we ask in Christ's name. Amen.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So this morning, we want to just acknowledge, I think, three different awards that our utilities, the water department, our utilities department has received. And so if everyone can come up and just, we'll just acknowledge the utilities department for these awards. And actually, Chris, Chris Brown is our utilities director. Can you just, can you talk about these awards and what has been accomplished?
Yes, sir. Thank you very much. We were very fortunate this year to be awarded three honors from different associations. The first is the Water Taste Test, the states of Oklahoma, Arkansas, and Louisiana. We had the Southwest American Water Works Association meeting here in Oklahoma City this year, and we won the best tasting water out of three states. So that's a pretty good accomplishment. So we'll be competing for the national, we'll be competing for the national best tasting water in June. So, great job, all of the water treatment folks. Secondly, we submitted an application with the, with AMWA, the Association of Metropolitan Water Agencies. They represent the largest water utilities in the nation, serving 100,000 or larger, and they gave us an excellence award for our overall performance. So that award includes how we manage our money, our fiscal responsibility, how we manage our utility, our sustainability and reliability, and generally how we manage the organization. And so we, we won their gold award this year. And the third award came at the Governor's Water Conference this year. It is the inaugural award, first time out. The Oklahoma Water Resources Board awarded us the Water Conservation Award for the best conservation program in the state. So we won that this year as well.
Thank you so much for all your efforts.
Thank you.
Okay, so I believe we'll start with the Office of the Mayor and an economic update presentation by Roy Williams, President of the Greater Oklahoma City Chamber of Commerce.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of the council, Mr. City Manager. Thank you for having me back to share some economic development highlights with you. There are specifically seven different areas I want to mention, and as always, I'll be brief and happy to take any questions any of you might have. The first thing I wanted to mention was to give you a criminal justice update. Earlier this year, I updated you on the progress of our joint criminal justice reform efforts underway, and today, we're really starting to see the fruits of these multiple years-long efforts we started. Last week, actually, the first meeting was held of the newly-formed Criminal Justice Coordinating Council, and it was a fitting time to remark on just how far we've come. We heard from a number of people who were on that council, but I think the one thing that jumped out was when Sheriff PD Taylor stated that our current jail population is now 1,850, which is down from a high of 2,600. So it's exciting to see tangible results, and together, we're going to continue to build this momentum. But I would say, even though that population is down, it's not a solution to the jail problem. We'll still be working on that. But that is very, very significant to have a reduction that size.
Roy, one of the things I thought was significant about that was that the sheriff is now able to take entire pods out of service and go in and rehab them, paint them, clean them, and fill the holes, and fix the plumbing, and he, it was difficult to do that when there were people, when they're inmates in those cells. And he's to the point, or close to the point, where he may be able to take two pods out of service and do this. And that's never really been done in the history of the jail to be able to do that kind of rehab on the cells. I think that's pretty significant.
Yeah, excellent point. Yeah, it has a lot of implications other than just population reduction. I would also tell you, a search is currently underway to find an executive director of the council, which would be a full-time position, and that person will work 24/7, we hope, toward implementing the recommendations once they're in place. Second thing I want to mention is Innovation District. Last May, I provided a fairly in-depth report to you on the work we've spirited toward establishing an Innovation District that celebrates what's going on in the bioscience and healthcare sectors, in addition to the innovation work that's being done by other aviation, aerospace, energy companies, et cetera. Since that time, since I talked to you, we've held two symposiums to highlight the innovation work that's occurring throughout Oklahoma City industries. And the first one was on imaging, and just recently, we completed a symposium on data analytics. The Symposium on Data Analytics was sold out, standing room only, indicating that there really is a need and a demand around innovation like that in our region. We have a third symposium scheduled, and that's going to be focused on sensor technology. So in essence, what we do is we bring in diverse industries who all have applications in those areas, and they share it with other companies. Also, along the Innovation District, the Oklahoma Health Center Foundation has officially formed a new legal entity that will lead the Innovation District effort, and a national search firm has now been engaged to find that executive director as well. Third thing I wanted to mention were some direct economic development activities. Lot of, lot of latter part of this year activity. We've seen a flurry of activity with some major job announcements and some significant capital investment in Oklahoma City. Last month specifically, there was the announcement of NTT Data Services, which is an internationally-owned company, and it announced an expansion in Oklahoma City, revealing that they will be the first tenant in a recently completed West Gate One complex on the west side of town. NTT Data had an existing presence here after they acquired a portion of Dell Services last year, and they have significant growth plans with that operation that they're moving out. Two out-of-state companies recently opened new operations in Oklahoma City as well. That includes MedXM and Amazon. MedXM held a ribbon-cutting operation in its operations at the former Lucent Technologies facility on Reno. And when fully staffed, that California-based company plans to offer 400 full-time new jobs over the next five years in Oklahoma City. And as I mentioned, we celebrated with Amazon as they opened their new 300,000-square-foot sorting facility west of I-40 on October 24. We also recently celebrated SkyWest and their plans to locate a new 135,000-square-foot maintenance center on the Will Rogers Airport land, and that will result in 325 new jobs when they're fully staffed. And finally, just last week, Solaris Paper, which is another internationally-owned company, moved into the former Clearwater Paper Corporation facility on North Council Road. That manufacturer plans to have finished products shipping out of Oklahoma City by January. We've been working with them for eight months. We edged out two other states who were in the final competition, and this will have about $137 million economic impact on our community. The fourth thing I want to mention is our talent initiatives. Efforts continue toward implementing recommendations that came out of a talent study that we did in 2016. Through five different recommended strategies, we're working towards some real top talent for industries in Oklahoma City to continue thriving. We're currently developing strategies around the following recommendations. One is rapid retooling initiatives for existing companies, upskilling, competency-based training, work-based education, pipeline development and marketing of middle-skill jobs, and the recruitment of trained talent. One tool that we continually use in recruiting talent from outside of the region is the telling of our story and how people, places, and things of Oklahoma City make our city a great place to live and work. We recently launched a new feature on our economic development website, and it's called "A River's Rise." The feature walks readers through the history of the Oklahoma River from the land run to current day. This is a tool to introduce people to our community through learning about the impact the river has had on our city and highlighting really the unexpected world-class amenities that are right here in downtown Oklahoma City. You can view the new feature on greateroklahmacity.com, and we intend to add additional video and content. I really encourage you to look at it. It is a phenomenal story and reminds us of the many things that we've gone through to sort of get to where we are. And new content will be, will be developed primarily in aerospace and bioscience. In addition to talent attraction, we're also working to convene industries around employer training models, and our first best practice forum will be held December the 4th. We've invited business leaders across multiple industries to hear about current trends, contemporary practices, that really focus on employer-led training as a method not only for reskilling, but upskilling existing employees. And finally, for those of you who are Cheers fans, John Ratzenberger, who famously portrayed Cliff Clavin, is going to be our keynote speaker at our annual meeting. It's not going to be a comedy hour. John Ratzenberger has become a passionate advocate of developing a pipeline of middle-skill workers, and that's going to be his message, the importance of that, and what he has seen in best practices. So it won't be a comedy, it'll be education. Fifth thing I want to mention is Tinker. Work is well underway at the KC 46A Heavy Maintenance Complex on the south side of Tinker, the BNSF site that was purchased. Phase one construction of infrastructure and concrete work for the ramps is 85% complete. And additionally, the walls and the roof of the first hangar are expected to be up by the end of December, permitting inside work to begin. As a reminder, this is a half a billion-dollar project, 1,350 jobs, and about 14 hangars when this project is completed. Sixth thing, sixth thing I want to mention is non-stop flights. We continually work with the airport on non-stop flights. We recently worked with Frontier Airlines to finalize new non-stop flights to San Diego and Orlando, so we get the east coast and west coast. And just last week, Via Air, a new startup airline out of Austin, Texas, announced their non-stop service between Oklahoma City and Austin beginning in January, which the chamber will begin marketing that next month in December. Last thing I want to mention are the OKC outlets. Councilor McAtee and I were pleased to participate in ceremonies earlier this month celebrating the new ownership torque of, of the outlets, and it was really exciting to see the changes they've already made for retailers and customers alike, in addition to the announcement of new tenants. And I assure you, and I was equally thrilled to see Councilman McAtee's wife contributing to the increasing sales tax of Oklahoma City during that event, maybe to his chagrin, but certainly to the good side of Oklahoma City. That's conclusion of my remarks. Happy to try to answer any questions if anybody has any.
Questions? Thank you, Roy.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Look for a motion on the rest of the appointments.
Move the item in a second.
All in favor, take a vote. Yeah, okay, passes unanimously. Do I need a motion to receive the Journal of Council proceedings?
Yes, we have to say.
All in favor? Okay, passes unanimously. Request for uncontested continuances.
Mr. Vice Mayor, a couple this morning, starting on page seven, no, starting on page six, actually. Item 7L, that needs to be deferred until December 15th. It's on the consent docket, item 7L, defer until December 15th. And then also on the consent.
December 5th, Jim.
December 5th?
Yeah.
She's pretty good.
[laughing].
Also on page seven, we'd like you to strike items 7R and 7S. There are some errors affecting the assessment rate on that, and so we'll bring those back at a future time. Again, that's on page seven, items 7R and 7S. And then moving to page 20, item 9I1, E 1644 Northwest 15th Street, we ask that that be stricken, we need to re-notify. F 2007 Northwest 28th Street, we need to strike that, owner secured. G 2023 Northwest 28th Street, we ask that that be stricken, the owner is secured. Item I 1505 Southwest 44th Street, we ask that that be stricken, the owner is secured. Item L 501 Southeast 49th Street, we ask that that be stricken, the owner has secured. Item M 1613 Southeast 52nd Street, we ask that that be stricken, the owner has secured. And then moving to item 9J1, item E 1644 Northwest 15th Street, we ask that that be stricken, we need to re-notify. Item F 2007 Northwest 28th Street, we ask that that be stricken, the owner secured. Item L 501 Southeast 49th Street, we ask that that be stricken, the owner has secured. And finally, item M 1613 Southeast 52nd Street, we ask that that be stricken, again, the owner has secured.
Any other uncontested continuances? We have one revocable permit. Is anyone here on the Bricktown Parklet? Okay, let's take a, ready for a vote?
Move the item. It's about a second.
Passes unanimously. We'll recess the council meeting and reconvene as the Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority. And we can vote.
Second.
And that passes unanimously. We'll adjourn the OOCMFA and convene as the Oklahoma City Public Property Authority.
OECAT.
Passes unanimously. Adjourn the OCPPA and convene as the Oklahoma City Environmental Assistance Trust, Claims and Payroll.
Move the item.
Passes unanimously. Adjourn the OCEAT and reconvene the council meeting with the consent docket.
Move the item. It's about a second.
Any individual items, considerations?
I'd like to talk about item Q, please.
Q. And we have, we have.
Just here on Q to answer questions.
I see. Okay, we have someone here to answer questions on that item. Any other items? Okay, Todd, do you want to?
Yeah, I just wanted to talk briefly and just kind of bring this to light a little bit. This is a new business that'll be opening at 204 Southwest 25th Street, and the name of it is Confections. But really, you know, the beauty of, of this business is that it's really starting as a part of the small business development leading, you know, based under the block grant that we do. Sarah Miller will be the, wave your hand, Sarah. Sarah will be the owner of this business, and it's going to be a high-end confectionery located in Capitol Hill. They hope it to open before Valentine's Day, so wish them good luck on this endeavor.
Sarah, do you have any comments, or you just? No? Okay, all right.
Any other thoughts on the consent docket?
Okay, ready for vote? And passes unanimously. Which brings us to the concurrence docket.
Move the item. It's about a second.
Ready for a vote? Passes unanimously. Items requiring separate votes, 9A1 is in Ward 8, there's an ABC2 application, and...
The applicant.
The applicant is here.
Sorry, I was finding my notes. This is an ordinance on final hearing, it's an ABC2 permit. It's to permit beer, wine, and mixed beverage sales associated with a restaurant. It went before the Planning Commission on September 28, 2017, and passed, and there are no protests that I'm aware of here today, so I've moved the item.
Applicant, do you wish to speak, or just let us vote? Do, just vote. All in favor, passes unanimously. Item 2 is in Ward 8 also.
Item 2 is, just one second, is also the same thing. It's an ABC2 permit for a permit at 2,800 Northwest 140th. It was approved by the Planning Commission. There is no opposition that I'm aware of, and I'll move for approval.
Ready to vote? Passes unanimously. Item 3 is a SPOD application in Ward 6. Did anybody sign up to speak?
Yes.
Would you like to speak?
If you'd like to.
Were there any protests?
No.
No? Are we okay with moving forward? Okay, we're ready for a vote if that's okay with you.
We need not.
Need it?
Move the item.
And it passes unanimously.
Mr. Vice Mayor, this is the, an item that Councilman Salier had requested we do an emergency on for their, because of their timing on some federal dollars.
Move for the emergency.
Second.
Okay, ready to vote? And all in favor, or passes unanimously. So both the item and the emergency pass. Item 4 is in Ward 2, did anybody sign up to speak? There was no protest, passing, Planning Commission unanimously, I move for approval.
I'd move the item.
You'd move, you would. And let's take a vote. Passes unanimously. Item 5 is in Ward 8, again, SPOD application.
Thank you, Your Honor. This is an ordinance on final hearing to rezone a pod located at 3330 West Memorial to a SPOD 1,008. It was in front of the Planning Commission on September 28, and it passed, subject to technical evaluations. I'm not aware of any protests, so I'd move the item at this time. Thank you.
Ready for a vote? Passes unanimously. Which brings us to item 6, which is in Ward 1, SPOD application, James?
Yeah, this is a SPOD on Northwest Expressway. It's just, just allows Low Point Beer to be sold at a barber shop. It had unanimous Planning Commission approval. There were no protests. Has anybody signed up?
The applicant is here.
Okay, well, I'll move for approval.
Okay, ready for a vote? Passes unanimously. Item 7, James, also SPOD application in Ward 1.
Yeah, this is a, a SPOD application on North Council Road and Northwest Expressway to allow a microhospital to be built there. It had Planning Commission approval also and staff approval. There were no, were no protests, and that I'll move for approval.
Okay, ready for a vote? Passes unanimously. Which brings us to item 9B, which is removing a two-hour metered parking in Ward 7.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. This item did, was approved by the Planning Commission. With that said, has anyone signed up to speak? No one signed up to speak, I move for approval.
Second.
Okay, ready for a vote? Passes unanimously. Item 9C is an ordinance on final hearing relating to nuisances and abandoned buildings.
Right, and this is a change that we've, we've, this is the third time it's, it's been here, and this will administratively allow us to take items off the abandoned building list.
I'd move the item.
Okay, ready for a vote? Passes unanimously. Item 9D is Parks and Recreation, and this is amending Section 50269 prohibiting, this is the colored powder in the streets and sidewalks.
I'd move the item, Your Honor.
Second.
Ready for a vote? Passes unanimously. Item 9E.
This is an ordinance on final hearing, this brings the retirement system in alignment with IRS regulations.
Any comments on 9E?
Move the item.
Ready for a vote? Passes unanimously. 9F?
9F is the modifications, adjustments to the water and wastewater rates that we talked about. This is, again, this is the third time you've seen it, it's on for final hearing.
I'd move the item, Your Honor.
Has anyone signed up to speak, or any comments on water rates? Okay, we're ready for a vote then, and it passes unanimously. Item 9G.
9G is the public hearing on vehicles for hire ordinance, and I believe there's a couple people that have signed up to speak, and we do have representatives in the police department here to respond to, and Haley's here to respond to any questions that may come up.
Okay.
He needs to give his name and address.
Okay, can you give us your name and address for the record, please?
My name is Yalcin Etayi.
Okay.
I'm on 320 North Villa, Oklahoma City, Oklahoma, 72107. I'm here to talk about the audience changes. First of all, I would like to thank especially Mr. Betel Juan Baldurama. I want to thank Mr. Patrick Stewart, and I want, of course, the Chief of Police, Mr. Bill City. And also, I want to thank our inspector, Chris, Mr. Chris Bells. I'm here to talk today about this addendum, respectfully requesting that the city council accept this. It's concerning for licensing, the businesses doing the inspection. Currently here in Oklahoma City, we don't have no regulations. In other states and cities, there is regulations. There is two types of inspections. Usually, the states doing the mechanical inspection, usually the states handle all that stuff. But for example, Minnesota, just as like us here in Oklahoma, they don't have state inspection. So the city make regulations for all the, I mean, they have an authorized list, mainly just like a utility contractor. Before you do any work, you got, you have to hire a utility contractor, getting the somebody certified by the city to do the job. So mainly, that's what I'm asking, because the city right now does not know nothing about these people signing these papers. And the papers are still getting signed in Shepherd Mall parking lot, Lake Overholzer parking lot. We're trying to stop all this mess. And at least the OKCPD, they have been pushing for it, which is really good, and now we just need more regulation. They did their part, so right now, it's the city council members to, to add this addendum to, to this ordinance, so we can have everything right. Otherwise, people just signing, and they don't have no insurance whatsoever. So we just need them to be just like the other cities. I'm ready to answer all the questions, I didn't prepare any speech or anything, but I'm ready to answer any questions, because it might be complicated for some of the members here. If anybody has any questions, I'm, I'm ready to explain.
Do you, do you have examples of, of other cities?
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. We have a city of Seattle, we provide a city of Seattle, city of Minneapolis. We do have examples. I can provide that to the, to the legal department. If anybody would like to sit down and meet, I'm ready to provide them. Yeah, they have an authorized list. For example, just next door, Texas, Texas, they have qualifications for certification as a licensed state inspection station. Inspection facility must meet minimum DPS space requirements, must have qualified personnel to perform inspection, must possess required inspection equipment, complete and submit to required application fees and forms. Applicant must pass background check. I mean, there is a lot. The list is long. At least they know who they are to inspect. So I'm asking that these people doing this inspection must be, must have garage liability insurance, at least. They should have some paperwork. They should be liable. You just can't delegate work to a third party, and you don't know nothing about them, which is, it doesn't seem, make any right, it doesn't seem, it's not right.
Jeff Becker, maybe from the city to maybe just give a response, or?
Certainly. Good morning. I'm Deputy Chief Jeff Becker from the Police Department. In 2016, the Police Department was made aware that the ordinance was lacking in thoroughness about how the inspections were standardized, so we set on a path to conduct some meetings and gather input from vehicle-for-hire owners to determine what their input was. We evaluated what is being done in other cities, and throughout that process, we determined best practices and worked with legal to incorporate those in the ordinance updates, based on what was said this morning. what was said this morning. If you would like me to meet with the gentleman to evaluate what his input is about insurance requirements, we can do that.
So what you're telling me, this was approved by the Oklahoma City Police Department with the assistance of the municipal councillor's office?
Yes.
I'd move the item.
Final vote is in, final vote is in a couple of weeks, so if you'd like to meet with him in the interim?
Sure. Thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion in a second? Ready for a vote? And that passes unanimously. Okay, that brings us to public hearing regarding dilapidated structures. Has anybody signed up to speak on any of these items?
No.
Ready for a vote? And that passes unanimously. Which brings us to public hearing regarding unsecured structures, item nine I. Has anybody signed up to speak on any item, any comments on anything under item nine I? Look for a motion.
Second.
Ready for a vote? Passes unanimously. Which brings us to J, public hearing regarding abandoned buildings. Anybody signed up to speak on any of these items? Any comments from council? Look for a motion.
Second.
And ready for a vote? Passes unanimously. Item K, public hearing regarding removal of property from the abandoned building list. Anybody signed up to speak on item A?
Second.
Ready for a vote? Passes unanimously. Item L, joint resolution with the Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority. Any comments?
No.
No. Okay, so do we, we need a vote on this? Okay, ready for a vote? Item M is a resolution authorizing a municipal councillor to take action. Do we need? No, we don't. Don't need executive session on this.
Second.
Okay, ready for a vote? Passes unanimously. I believe items N, O, and P, we all do need executive sessions. Okay.
We need three items.
Separately? Okay, let's start with N, then.
Move the item in the executive session.
And that passes unanimously. Item O?
Move the item in the executive session.
Passes unanimously. Item P?
Move the item in the executive session.
And passes unanimously. Item Q, claims recommended for denial.
Move the items.
And ready for a vote? That passes unanimously. Claims recommended for approval.
Move the items.
Items from council. And the first is, is, if I can introduce this, or actually, I might just have Andrew Worthman introduce this from the Pew Foundation.
Thank you, council members and Vice President, City Manager. My name is Andrew Worthman. I reside at 1012 Chauncey Street. That's Eau Claire in Wisconsin. I want to thank you for the opportunity to address you this morning on this resolution regarding support for our national parks. I work for the Pew Charitable Trusts in the Midwest for our Restore America's Parks Campaign. Pew is a nonprofit, nonpartisan organization, research-driven, working on a number of different public policy issues. We're in 28 different states for our National Parks Campaign, and our work really centers around working with local and state leaders to help make the case to Congress to get serious about investing in our national parks. There are over 400 national park sites across our country. Here in Oklahoma, there are six. From the Chickasaw National Recreation Area, to the Trail of Tears, to the unique public-private partnership of the Oklahoma City Memorial. Your sites here in Oklahoma are diverse. They are beautiful, historic, and commemorative. That's why, last year, more than 1.6 million people in Oklahoma visited national park sites. That's families, schoolchildren, international travelers, travelers, and folks from all different kinds of backgrounds. However, while the parks are as popular as ever, with record visitation, there is also intermittent funding from Congress, and this has led to roughly $11.3 billion backlog in needed maintenance. Here in Oklahoma, that number is close to 20 million in critical repairs. That's trails closed, that's water lines and electricity lines that need repair in the Chickasaw National Recreation Area. That's with one-third of all sites, national park sites, being military heritage. That's monuments that need upkeep and historic markers that have gone to ruin. That's why more than 120 different cities across our country, of all sizes, from Minneapolis and Atlanta, to cities as small as Bayfield, Wisconsin, here where I'm from, and Cortez, Colorado, have all passed resolutions like the one you have on your desk before you. Message is consistent and it's clear to Congress to invest in needed maintenance in our national parks, because it saves money down the road, it encourages more visitors, and it makes our parks more accessible. It is also vital to communities who receive millions upon millions of dollars from visitors throughout our state, and it preserves and reflects our history. Here in the state, there is broad support for this measure, with the Oklahoma Hotel Association, the Historic Society, Visit OKC have been a, a, a close partner, the Chickasaw Nation as well, and many other organizations that see the importance of dedicated funding for our national parks. Whether it's bipartisan legislation in Congress that exists right now for possible, for a possible infrastructure bill, there are a lot of opportunities on the horizon for Congress to actually address this, to send money to Oklahoma, to make sure that your national park sites are fully funded. For anyone who stood out at night at the memorial, just a few blocks from here, and been moved by the display, visited the Washtata Battlefield, or seen the red bud bloom in spring in the Chickasaw National Recreation Area, you know that our national parks are about us. They're about our story. They're about our history. They're about our natural spaces, our place of solace. That's why we need to fight for them, not only for us, but for those who come after us, so many who come after us, that they can feel the hope that we feel in those places, the tears that we shed, the chance to stand in silence and see the beauty of nature. Thank you. I'll answer any questions if you have any, but I appreciate your consideration on this resolution.
And so this, this is a resolution, a non-binding resolution, asking Congress to find a dedicated funding source, doesn't opine about exactly which one they need to choose, but joins 100 and maybe 25 cities across America that have already done, city councils that have already done this. I think Mike Carrier of the Convention and Visitors Bureau spoke a couple weeks ago and expressed his strong support. I, thank you for your tireless efforts in including Oklahoma. I know you've met with so many people in Oklahoma, made trips here, and meeting with our congresspersons. I appreciate all your efforts in including us in the effort, as well as all the efforts of the Pew Charitable Trust.
Thank you, and thank you all for your service as well.
I would move for a motion to develop the resolution that we would send to Congress.
Okay, so.
Second.
So, so we've developed, I mean, to develop one, or we? You've got it. Okay, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. It mirrors ones in St. Paul and others, but it includes language about our Oklahoma parks in it. Well, go ahead, Larry, I'm sorry.
I have a question, just a philosophical question. We do not like unfunded mandates. Is this not similar to an unfunded mandate, only in reverse, where we're asking somebody to, to do something, but we're not giving him any help on the money to do it? That's just my question.
So, I mean, my understanding is that Congressman Tom Cole has a very specific idea of how to fund that, there are, and he's introducing legislation to Congress. I think this avoids kind of getting into that debate, but I think it just asks them that, well, you could, can you speak to that, or?
Certainly, and, and thanks for the question, council member. And as the Vice Mayor mentioned, there is legislation, there's a number of different ways that Congress is looking to actually address deferred maintenance in national parks. One is a bipartisan bill that, as mentioned, Congressman Cole has been an early supporter on, that has 22 Democrats and 22 Republicans on it, that says essentially, a pot of money from onshore and offshore mineral extraction could be a potential place. There's a, the Treasury has some additional funding that they see could be fitting for this kind of thing, but that is only one possible way to address this. We know that Congress has talked about an infrastructure bill in coming months. That is another, I met with Senator Inhofe's office yesterday, and they're interested in looking at how infrastructure could tie in directly with this. And so what this resolution says is that, you know, whatever solution Congress looks to, to try to make up the maintenance, that you're essentially asking for them to see it as an important thing, to send money to, to the state to help pay for maintenance needs. So, you know, I don't, I don't think that this, this resolution doesn't specify one way to do that. It says that we find it important and hope that your priorities include it going forward.
I, I think the difference, too, is that we're not making anybody do anything, we're just encouraging them. I think that's the, probably the distinction between what this is and an unfunded mandate that we would get from the state government or the federal government.
I think the one thing that stood out in my mind in reading these materials is that over $27 million were spent in Oklahoma City and other parts of the states, just from parking visitors. And so that's, that's an important thing. That's economic impact.
I'd like to raise a question about what it would require to create a new national park in the Oklahoma City area, and in particular, if we could somehow designate the river, say, from the new American Indian Cultural Center back west through Western or Pennsylvania, to designate that. If that would complicate things, limit our ability to continue to develop it, or could it be a positive thing? For example, I thought at some point we were going to expand on the Wiley Post Park and put in a monument recognizing him along the river.
I think there are some bond funds available for some improvements in Wiley Post Park.
Well, I just think that's an area that could have a lot of potential for further development, but at the same time, I wouldn't want to limit it from any commercial development that may want to come along, you know, a hotel or something like that. And we see it like in the Yellowstone, in most national parks, they have commercial hotels and other developments within the park.
I'm not sure the federal government is looking to taking on additional federal parks at, at this point.
Well, we could talk to them.
We could.
Yep. And just see, but, and I want to watch that video that Roy talked about this morning, about the history of the river, because here's a point. This is what would set our river apart from anyone else's. You know, it goes back to that 1970 statement where we had a former city employee say, "This is the only river I have to mow once a week," because, you know, we had no water in it. And to see the development of the river from that point to where it is now, that by itself is quite an accomplishment, but it just seems like that area has a lot of potential. And again, I'm not asking for an answer, I'm just raising the point about considering, looking at continued development, but also the possibility of it becoming like a national park, because I think it just enhances, on a national level, the activity in a particular area if it's designated as a national park. Thank you.
So was there a motion?
A motion.
And a second? Are we, any other comments? We ready for a vote? And that passes unanimously. Thank you so much for your efforts.
Thank you for your time.
John, do you want to address your?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. What this item is, is a resolution to declare a moratorium on applications for naming or renaming of a public street bridges, bridge, alley, within Oklahoma City. Recently, Ward seven has had a significant amount of applications to rename streets, and so I think we need to relook at the policy, and I think this will allow us significant time to relook at the, how we rename streets and so forth.
Multiple directions. Does anybody else have comments?
Larry.
Oh, Larry, sorry.
Jim, correct me if I'm wrong, I thought several years ago, we adopted as a council a quote "policy" on quote about naming streets.
Don't believe there's any quotes on it. We adopted a policy on, on the naming of streets. The, it appears that the, the Planning Commission may need to have some refreshing as to what that policy includes.
So, does it come down to, do we want to just enforce the current policy that we have, or do we need to have this moratorium? Because if you follow the current policy, as I remember the way it was written, a lot of the recent street namings that happened, John, would not have happened, because they didn't fit into, under the umbrella of that policy. I just raised that question.
Yeah, I, I think by us taking another look, I think there might be a way where we can have what is called dual naming, which will allow the, the public street to remain the same, and just look into what if we allow dual-named streets. But that's why, one of the reasons why I want to do this moratorium, for look at, for us to look at other ways to, to look at other ways.
So, John, so during this six months, we could maybe look at amending our current policy? We could study different?
Yes.
Ideas and look at amendments before we entertain more and more applications?
Because currently, right now, I know of seven applications that will be coming through, I think two or, two or three, as I would have been fouled, and so I know of several others coming, so I think we just need to halt it for right now and just take a, another look and see what amendments, if any, need to be made.
And it's not just Ward seven, there have been in other wards as well?
That is correct. But I think Ward seven, I'm giving my first share.
I think that's right.
So, could we have like a little presentation of what the policy currently is, or, I mean, not right now, but whenever of, because I don't really even know what it is.
We'd have to, we'll get you a copy of that policy.
Maybe I'm the only one, but I.
Yeah, we'd have to get you a copy of the policy.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, is there a motion?
Move the item.
Second.
Okay, ready for a vote? Passes unanimously.
All right, thank you.
Items from council, Mark?
I don't know if you've done this before, but this is the shortest council meeting I've ever attended.
I just want to say congratulations, Mr. Vice Mayor, on the petition draft. I look forward to learning more about the petition draft.
Thank you.
I would like to continue that and compliment Councilman Vice Mayor Shadi, as well as the others involved in, in obtaining those signatures. It's a lot more work than I realized to obtain that number of signatures. And what I hope happens, if nothing else, that the teachers, not just in Oklahoma City, but throughout Oklahoma, uses this as an example to teach their students at elementary, middle school, and high school about the way our democracy works. So here's a group of individuals who are not satisfied with the current state of, of our education system. They decide they want to attempt to increase the funding. So instead of just running out to the streets and beginning to protest, and sometimes those actions lead to violence, and many times, the message itself gets lost, because everyone's focusing on the actions of those individuals. Councilman Shadi and others went through a process to where they were able to obtain sufficient number of signatures from other citizens of Oklahoma City to bring this forth for a vote, and I just think it's a great example for our teachers to use to young people, to say, "If you've got a problem, if you're not satisfied with the way things are, this is the most effective solution to address those concerns." I also want to compliment Municipal Clerk Percy and her staff, as well as Municipal Council, Councillor Jordan and his staff. A lot of work had to be done in a very short time, and I, I know that this is just going to continue to raise. And I, I know that this is just going to continue to raise awareness and discussion on the issue, and that's the important aspect. I mean, that's what we want to see accomplished. We don't know what the outcome may be, but to bring this point forward to the public, I think is very important. Again, I want to compliment you.
Thank you.
Real quick, a development that we kind of passed right over and in the beginning of the council meeting, the appointment of a group of citizens who have volunteered to serve on the Citizens Capital Improvement Sales Tax Advisory Board. That's the board that's going to be helping implement the expenditure of money for infrastructure all over the next 27 months in the gym, for the extension of the sales tax. And so that, that ball was moving forward. Thank you.
James? Vice Mayor, I forgot to mention one other thing. Speaking of that, Larry, you know, our, our existing MAPS III is beginning to wind down. We only have about another month left of it, and there may be a surplus in that fund. So we might want to begin thinking about what to do with that surplus over the next several weeks. And I wish Councilwoman Sawyer was here because an issue, I was involved in a discussion recently, you know how we went through the effort to make the downtown area a quiet zone with respect to the train and providing either closing of certain streets or enhanced guardrails on open streets? I think one thing that got lost in the fact that this sound began to diminish the noise was I think it's a much improved safety measure to have those extended guardrails in place. And so I would just say, let's consider extending that quiet zone, not so much, I mean, it's important that we try to reduce noise where we can, but also from a safety standpoint, when those guardrails actually prevent automobiles from crossing that during the time a train may be coming down the tracks is extremely important. And I'm sure we could extend it further south, 44th Street, 59th Street, and then north, I think it goes all the way to 63rd currently, but then you've got Will Sherman and Britton Road easily to look at. Hefner, yeah. And for individuals who happen to live in that area, that horn on the train is pretty disruptive, especially depending upon when it occurs. But probably more importantly is the enhanced safety that those extended guardrails provide. Thank you.
I do have some, on the, on the, talking about taxes with the, with the school, the petition drive, I think it's another good opportunity for people to be educated on the difference between sales tax, income tax, and property tax, you know, because there are positives and negatives to all of them on what is the proper way to tax people. And I think that that's another education opportunity in, in addition to talking about how democracy works, so. And I have definitely my own thoughts about which are the best ways of taxing, but I'll leave that for another time.
And I would just mention, tonight is my favorite, favorite meeting of the year. It's the Thanksgiving service of the Interfaith Alliance, and, which is a, which is a 75 different faith traditions and belief systems that all kind of come together, they do it in cities all over America, but here they kind of shift to a different church or synagogue or mosque every year. Tonight it's at the Mayflower Church, it's at 7:30. And just really talking about gratitude, which is really the one thing that every religion agrees on, it's every religion tries to evoke that emotion, it's a, it's a universal religious virtue. And just in the last 20 years, scientists have kind of caught on, and now there's this avalanche of data about the impact on our health and happiness that just five minutes of working on gratitude a day can provide for us. It's really kind of stunning. And so that'll be the topic of the meeting tonight. That's at 7:30 at Mayflower Church, which is near 63rd in Portland. And along that lines, I want to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving, express my gratitude to the council for the way we work together, and I appreciate that. I appreciate everyone here. So with that, I think we're at City Manager Reports.
Very good. And Jason Fairbrush is here to give us an update on the transition from, to our new parking system, talk about timing logistics as we go forward, public relations, other aspects.
Yes, sir. Good morning, Mr. Vice Mayor, Council. It's good to be with you this morning. And as the City Manager indicated, yes, I have a presentation to really just kind of provide a summary of the report that's in your packet, that City Manager Report should provide, you know, basically an outline for you in terms of the progress that the Public Transportation Department has made, working alongside police as well as Public Works, and really modernizing our city's on-street parking system to one that's based on a play, a pay-by-play revenue collection and enforcement system. So with that, we'll hit a few highlights of the report in the presentation this morning. And I wanted to really organize the presentation into, into kind of three pieces. One, give you an update on the tasks related to the project that we've completed, those tasks that are still pending that you'll be, see, you'll see will be occurring very soon. And then talk a little bit about our communication campaign to make sure that our community and our visitors are aware of how to use our new on-street parking technology. So, one of the very first things we were able to accomplish with the assistance of council was updating our ordinances to align to the technology that we're now looking to use. Back September 26th, actually, council approved ordinance changes that allowed us to go from a pay-and-display system, whether the, whether the parking that was paid for was displayed on the actual mechanical meter or displayed on the vehicle by a sticker that's printed from the parking machines. We're able to transition from that pay-and-display to the pay-by-play technology. So that was a, that was a big step for us. The other part of the ordinance changes, as you'll recall, was consolidating our, at that time, existing eight different parking meter zones into one two-hour zone everywhere that on-street parking is enforced. And again, it simplified the system, and our, our thought is it will make it a lot more convenient for users too, to be able to pay for more than one hour of parking anywhere that we have our parking meters. Now, parking can still be purchased in 15-minute increments, but it just gives a customer the flexibility to go more than an hour on the on-street parking anywhere we have the parking meters. So as far as other tasks that were completed, once the ordinance was passed, we ordered the equipment, as you'll recall, we do, we are going to leverage our, our resources, our existing resources by using our existing parking meters, but our existing electronic parking meters will be equipped with a new keyboard. And you can see an image of what the new keyboard looks like here on the slide, along with the pallets of equipment that arrived at Weatherby Electric, the local Parkyon dealer here in Oklahoma City, that's going to help us with the installation and upgrade to our meters. Some other things that we've been able to accomplish since the ordinance change was approved is our kickoff meetings. You know, anytime you have a project that involves multiple departments and multiple vendors, that early coordination is critical, getting everybody to kind of agree to the work plan and the timeframe. And so we began having our kickoff conference calls and meetings just very quickly after the, the ordinance changes were actually approved. We had a meeting with Parkyon on, I believe it was October 11th. We had a conference call with Newpark on October 20th. We had a follow-up conference call with Newpark Public Transportation and the Police Department on November 1st. And again, the idea was to do as much coordination as we could upfront before our vendors are on-site and bring our system online. Equipment installation and conversion, so this will be a big piece of the project, and this is something that you're going to see begin to occur most likely, based on the schedule right now, the week of December the 11th. And again, I mentioned our local vendor, Weatherby Electric, will be the one that will actually be upgrading our meters with the new keyboards that you see here on the image. And they'll also be relocating the existing electronic meters. If you'll recall, we're going to go to one meter, generally one meter per block face, now that customers don't have to pay for parking and then return to their car, they can simply pay at any meter en route to their, their meeting or their destination, wherever they're going to. We're estimating that to take about 20 days to transition all the meters over. Again, we look to start the week of December 11th, and the first location will be Park Avenue. We'll start here right around, just on the other side of Hudson, and we'll work our way down Broadway. We'll then begin concentrating on the Project 180 areas where there's already electronic meters, and then eventually begin positioning some of the electronic meters in the areas where we now have the coin-operated meters, and at the same time, be removing those coin-operated meters so that customers can begin using electronic meters. So it's going to be kind of one of those, obviously phased projects where we have to kind of, we have to take it street by street, but we feel like we have a, a plan that will, as you'll see at the end of the presentation on timeline, a plan that'll have us, have this project pretty much wrapped up by the end of January. One of the other pieces of the equipment installation and conversion will be updating some of the permanent signage. I know signage has been a question. We'll certainly remove the existing one-hour parking signs if they no longer apply. And then as we get further along in the process, where additional permanent signs are needed, we'll, we'll replace them. And so then as far as enforcement goes, the week of December 18th, the Newpark vendor will be on-site to install the hardware on the police service tech vehicles. You see one of the vehicles here, the Ford Escape, so it will be equipped with two different cameras. And just to, again, kind of remind you how the technology will work, Newpark is actually the vendor that provides the license plate recognition software. Newpark communicates with our Parkyon parking meters, so it has essentially a live data feed of what license plates have paid for parking, and then also connects to the license plate recognition cameras so that as the vehicles, the police vehicles drive down the street, scanning the license plates, temporarily storing just the license plate number, the system will be able to identify, when it scans a plate, whether or not that plate has a current paid parking transaction in the database. So, again, we think from an enforcement standpoint, should certainly be an efficient means to do that, and the police department have been great partners, working with us to, to make this happen. So again, December 18th is when we'll begin installing that equipment on the vehicles, which, as you know, will coincide with the first installation of the pay-by-play on Park Avenue the week before, and so we'll look forward to doing some testing then. And then communication, finishing up.
Excuse me, can I ask you before you move on, a question? So will that scanning equipment be handheld, or is it a part of the police vehicle?
Yeah, the, there will be two cameras, and they'll, they'll be attached to the police vehicle, so it's not handheld.
Okay. And then secondly, so let's say you're parking at a space, and it's, and you use the full two hours, can you go back there and acquire additional time and stay at that place, or are you supposed to move your?
You're supposed to move your vehicle. The ordinance is specific about that.
Okay, so, but let me throw out another scenario. So let's say you're over here on Couch Drive, and you put in two hours, and after an hour and a half, you leave, but you want to go somewhere else downtown. Will this system allow you to carry over that 30 minutes remaining, and you get to park at another location without putting in, I mean?
It, it should, but, but I'm going to have to check with the vendor to get you an accurate answer on that.
Yeah.
I believe that was the intent.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Interesting. Yeah. Well, I'm going to test it out.
Okay.
What, I've got a question on temporary tags. What would you input on temporary tags? You know, they just fully display the date.
Something we haven't, we haven't thought of is on the temporary tags. You know, we, we know that our, our current vendor, Newpark, does this in other cities. I'm sure it's come up, so we'll have to ask them about that. I appreciate you bringing it up, because it's something, at least at this point, we have not discussed in our work plan.
I was just curious.
Yeah?
Thanks.
They do have a number assigned, but they may not be scanned or readable.
Right, so you're either inputting a number that isn't really visible on the tag, that the scanner isn't going to read anyway, or the date, which is the big number on the tag.
We'll have to see how that works.
Yeah.
Yeah, and you know, we'll, we'll rely on the police department too, particularly for that enforcement piece. You know, there's, there's areas now, as you know, that they, that they enforce that aren't metered, the two-hour un-metered parking spaces, and so I'm sure there's a, a manual way to do that, if that's what it came down to. But, but appreciate the question, it's something we'll, we'll need to vet before we launch the technology.
I guess it'll be flagged, and there'll have to be some type of manual evaluation.
Okay, so talking a little bit about communication, we know that one of the biggest parts of this project is making sure the community and the visitors are well familiar with the new technology and how to use it. So our communication campaign is going to consist of signage, press releases, social media, and of course, announcements on our webpage. So got a few examples here to show you. On the, on the left portion of the slide, you can see a example of a social media post from Parking OKC explaining that changes are coming to the parking meter system with instructions on how to use the new parking meter technology. However, in terms of social media, we won't rely just on those followers of Parking OKC. Fortunately, we have enough relationships and stakeholders within our community that we'll also be able to leverage followers and such from these other organizations. So for example, if someone follows downtown OKC, or perhaps the Chamber of Commerce, we can get this social media information out to those, those same groups of people. So we expect the social media to be intense and ongoing, and something that we'll just continually monitor, you know, throughout the process, based on the feedback we receive from the community. So social media will be a really big piece of what we do. We'll, of course, do a press release, and then one of the things that we're trying is, and you can see this on the, I'm sorry, on the right-hand side of the slide, this is the concrete cling signage that will be posted on each one of the blocks with the new electronic meters. So in fact, council actually approved an item today on the agenda, revocable permit for these concrete clings. And so again, similar information to what we're going to post on social media, but you can see it's basically instructions about how to use the, the pay-by-play meters, advertising that they, they are, they do allow two-hour parking increments. And then we're going to place these two per block face. In some cases, there may be, you know, more per block face, depending on the size of the block, but the idea is to make it very clear and very noticeable that changes have come to the on-street parking system, and this is how you use it. Just on a side note, the material that the clings are made of are a non-slip type material, and we're starting to, although we haven't seen a lot of these within our community, they are becoming, you know, more and more, I guess, prevalent around the country. So, so anyway, that will be our communication approach. Finishing up with our timeline here, and I've went through most of this, but this will just kind of give you a snapshot of the project, starting from November, our current month, running through January. And then Phase Two, and I've, I've mentioned this, I think during our initial presentation with the ordinance change, Phase Two would be actually developing an RFP for a app that will integrate with the pay-by-play technology, again, adding even more convenience so that customers can actually pay for their parking from their phone, not only on the initial purchase, but if they happen to be, you know, in a meeting or at an event, and they need to add time to their meter, they can do that from their phone as well, as long as it's within that two-hour. within that two-hour maximum. So that, again, is a quick update on, on our project, and I'll be glad to answer any other questions.
Any other, let's see, any other City Manager Reports?
No, sir.
Citizens, have you heard? None? Okay, then we have executive session.